Good morning. Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. I am the Chair, Commissioner Kristi Yoakam. To my right is Vice Chair, Commissioner Sean Flowerday. To my far right, Commissioner Roma Amundson. To my left, Commissioner Rick Best. And to my far left, Commissioner Matt Schulte. Please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, you may begin with the location announcements.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located in the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Reading options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Item 1 Minutes, 1A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on October 10th, 2023.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. I see no comments. Please call the roll.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. 1B, an approval of the minutes of the 1 and 6-year road and bridge improvement program meeting held on October 10th, 2023.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. 2 is Claims, 2A, an amendment to the payroll claims report approved on October 10th, 2023.
Move approval of the payroll claims. Do we need an-
The amendment?
An amendment?
To the payroll claims.
And to update payroll to, what's the date that I'm looking for here?
October 4th, according to the sheet.
You've got it printed. All right.
Well, that's what the attachment says through October 4th.
It's in the link.
All right. I'm wondering why it's different.
And to update it the way we always do every week.
Second.
Let the attorneys fight me.
I want to clarify your motion.
Go for it.
Item A, you're moving to-
Yes.
The amendment to the payroll claims. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the payroll claims. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. Item 2B, approval of the claims processed through October 17th, 2023.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the claims through October 17th. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. Item 2C, approval of a claim to the Lower Platte South NRD in the amount of $3,511.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claim to the Lower Platte South NRD. Please call the roll.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yoakam?
I will abstain as my husband serves on the board.
Motion carries, 4-0. Item 2D, approval of a claim to the Mediation Center in the amount of $5,700.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claim. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 4-0. Item 2E, approval of a claim to Rapple Mill in the amount of
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve this claim. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Flowerday?
Abstain as my wife serves on the board.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 4-0. 2F, we have two claims, including billing for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided in Nebraska Revive statute 23-135. The Family Violence Council dated October 11th, 2023, for a total of $5,065. And Region 5 Systems dated October 11th, 2023, for a total of $67,198.58.
Move approval of F1 and 2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve these claims. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. Item 3, the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner, by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts. C-19-0844 with Kara Soft Technology Corporation for cloud services and LinkedIn Learning. C-22-0791 with True Green LP for the annual service of weed control and fertilization for county corrections. C-22-0697 with Alfred Benish &amp; Company for professional engineering services related to the replacement of county bridge F-181. C-20-0695 with Jones Automotive for the annual service and supply and installation of emergency equipment for city-county law enforcement vehicles. C-19-0747 with Wood River Energy LLC for the annual supply of natural gas and related services. C-22-0861 with Stericycle Incorporated for the annual service of hazardous medical waste pickup and disposal services. C-21-0468 with the Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska on behalf of the University of Nebraska-Lincoln's Law Psychology Program for the Youth Mental Health Diversion Program. C-21-0469 with the Board of Regents for the University of Nebraska on behalf of the University of Nebraska-Lincoln Law Psychology Program for the Youth Crisis Response Program. Right-of-Way contracts for the following. Kim A. Cook and the estate of Rebecca Cooster, South 68th Street and Witstruck Road, in the amount of $505. Kathleen A. Stevens, Southwest 42nd Street and West Princeton Road, in the amount of $1,547.50. Tyler and Caitlin Idis, Southwest 14th Street and West Bennett Road, in the amount of $955. Cheryl Ann Nielsen, North 70th Street and Wayman Road, in the amount of $3,295. A grant contract with Lincoln Public Schools for the truancy diversion program in the amount of $142,807. Receive and place and report, receive and place on file the county engineer report. And finally, setting a public hearing for Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the county city building regarding an application for a Class I liquor license for Star's Romano's Pizzeria and Bakery LLC at 5580 West Mill Road, Suite 4, Raymond, and a corporate manager's liquor license for Kaylee Starr.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Do we have any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. 4, we have two public hearings, the first of which is vacations of portions of right-of-way east of the intersection of Northwest 40th Street and West Vine Street, more particularly described as Exhibit A and located in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
We will now open the public hearing.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering, 444 Cherry Creek Road. Wait for the exhibit to light up here. There we go. This is a request to vacate a portion of a roadway. It's approximately 650 foot long, 66 foot wide. This roadway originally went all the way across the northwest quarter of this section. It was originally petitioned in 1871. In 1912, most of this roadway was vacated, leaving just this small section. This section primarily has been used as a driveway for an existing farmstead. That's what it looks like now. We have not maintained this road, you know, since it's a driveway. Currently, on one of our recent, or on the most recent photo, this farmstead no longer exists. The owner of the property has petitioned that this road be vacated. At this time, we do not have any obligations to it. This is within the three mile of the city of Lincoln, so it does also have to go through the city council. They have approved this vacation, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Doesn't look like we have any.
Yeah, it seems really clear cut.
Really a clear cut one, yeah.
To finish vacating it 111 years later.
Yeah.
The rate that government works at sometimes. Is there anyone else here to speak regarding this?
Swear you in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
My name is Ben Swanson. I'm with Remble Ludkey, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 300. You probably noticed that I am not Ann Post, but I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak before this board. I represent Clark Farm, the applicant. They're looking to essentially just clean up the lot line so they can put this little section to the agricultural use that the rest of the lot is being used for. I think you are all aware, but there was a little bit of a complicated process to get here, so I thought I would explain that a little bit. We were before you. You passed a resolution to get a report from the county engineer. The county engineer gave that report and recommended approval, but we had to go to the city of Lincoln first because it's within that three-mile zoning jurisdiction. We went to the planning commission. They recommended approval, and then the city council as well unanimously recommended approval. So we're back to you for final approval. Yeah, there's no road there. There's no planned road there. Clark Farm would just like to have that little piece of property back to clean up their lot. That's it.
It sounds so simple in the end.
It does.
After all that work.
Great. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter?
Good morning. John Ward with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. I'll just briefly add too, and I say this every, every so many vacations, but action on this will not be today. It'll be at a subsequent meeting per the road vacation statute, so I expect that to occur next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Seeing no further comments, we can close this public hearing regarding the vacation.
Commissioners, that brings us to 4B, our next public hearing, an amusement license application for Devon Ostrander to hold the No Shave Nebraska Annual Banquet Event on November 30th, 2023, at Champion Seed.
We will now open the public hearing regarding the amusement license application.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering, 444 Cherry Creek Road. This is a new one for us. This is for an event to be held. The location is approximately Roca Road or Highway 33 and Southwest 42nd Street. By their application, they're calling out approximately 600 people. That's a pretty big event. They do appear to have enough space for parking. Generally, we require enough for 300 cars or so with this number of events. Since this is a big event, we would request, respectfully request, that they put up some signs. We are very concerned about safety in this area. This is a road that's used quite a bit. Signs can be permitted along county roads as long as they apply for a permit. As far as anything along the state highway, which is on the north side, they would have to go through the Department of Roads for that, Department of Transportation, excuse me, for that. Other than that, we don't really have any other concerns except for the ones stated in our comments.
We presumably have enough time for them to get the-
Correct. Their, yeah, their event isn't until the end of November.
Right.
So there is enough time for this.
And what, just clarify signs, John?
You can't, we require that you cannot park on gravel roads. We want something out there. Safety is our number one concern, that it's warning any general public that happen to be driving by, hey, there's an event going on, whether it is the flashing signs that you see or any other kind of information that allows the public to know what's going on. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
And that's been conveyed to the applicant?
Yes, it's part of the, it's part of the comment process.
Okay.
Good, John.
Good morning. John Ward with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. I would also just note that I've spoken with Mr. Ostrander about the liquor license insurance for this event. He has represented to me that he does not currently have the $5 million aggregate policy coverage, which is required by our 2017 resolution about amendment, excuse me, amusement licenses, but will have that subsequently before the event. So I would ask clerk, I would ask the board preemptively to adopt the recommendation of Mr. Barry and to direct the county clerk to hold the amusement license until Mr. Ostrander has provided sufficient insurance coverage.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak regarding this issue? Good morning. You'll need to swear in as well.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
I'm Brent Wickman. I'm actually Vice President of No Shave Nebraska. Just so you guys know, No Shave Nebraska is a nonprofit. Benefits cancer families, local cancer families. Last year, we had a lot smaller event. This year, it blew up, is like three times the size, which is a great, great problem to have, right? Projecting, hopefully raising $120,000. Our, we're all volunteers, so everything, probably have a 92% margin or whatever, and all that money will be given as checks to cancer families. Because this has gotten bigger, we have actually worked, Salt Creek Summer Jam is in Sprague, J.J. Bowman, he's come to the board. We're actually working side by side with him. He has told us and Devon how to apply for the license. We're doing everything by everything we can. In question to the signage, we have talked about that. We are going to get it, and we know it's a free application. We will do that. We want to have signs way in advance that say slowdown, no shave Nebraska event, right and left, coming from both east and west. It's not really on the crest of the hill, but it's kind of, we just rather everybody be safe. Our plan is, he has seed meetings all the time, and he said parking isn't an issue. We also have a large bean field we can use. That being said, yeah, basically all the concerns, we, Devon actually runs an insurance company, so we will get that $5 million. It's just going through the right channels and getting the best price for our nonprofits. So if there's any questions, I can answer any questions as well. We just wanted to present and see if you guys needed anything.
Yeah, it sounds like you've got a good handle on those conditions that we will have to be sure happen before you get it taken care of.
Yeah, and there's no doubt we will get it done, so.
Appreciate you taking this on, and you must be pretty good at it, the way it's growing. So be careful what you ask for, but great cause and appreciate you drawing attention to it. And, you know, we have the responsibility that everybody gets home saying, everybody goes through the neighborhood, the area is safe, and that's the goal here, not, not to make it difficult, but just to keep everybody safe, so.
Completely understand. We also do have a sheriff that has volunteered his time. There's not a, I guess, required, from what we've read, there's not a required, you need a sheriff on duty, but we want that for, one, liability, two, to keep everybody safe. There will probably honestly not be anybody under 21 there, but we also want for shutting people off to make sure everybody's safe. We actually recommend, helps us for parking, but on all our, all our tickets says, please carpool. We did that last year. We had it at my shop. We filled it up, so we need a bigger one, but everybody was four to six people in a car, so it kind of helped with having DDs and everybody being safe too. And we reiterate that too. It's not worth having anybody risk, risk their lives. That gravel road, we will make sure that there is no parking on. We have plenty of room there. We have an overflow if we do need to, but that should not be an issue at all, so. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Sounds like they got it well in hand.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on this matter? We will now close the public hearing.
Commissioners, that brings us to new business, 5A, special designated license application for the No Shave Nebraska Annual Banquet Event on November 30th, 2023, at Champion Seed.
Move approval.
I would, if I-
Yeah, you want to amend that?
I'll give you that wording too. I would ask for a motion to approve the special designated license application with the direction for the county clerk to receive sufficient insurance before giving the license to the applicant and, and-
Signs?
Asking the applicant to provide signage sufficient with the recommendations of John Barry. And then subsequently to, they did apply for the amusement license, so I would ask for a motion on that as well. For the, for the special designated and the amusement license.
Special designated amusement license?
The, the special designated license and the amusement license that was the subject of the prior public hearing.
And amusement. Okay. Well, I will finish my motion then, I think. So I move approval with the understanding that the clerk will hold this certificate until the insurance coverage is provided and that dependent upon placing the appropriate signs as recommended by the engineering department, and I recommend approval of the special designated license application and the amusement license.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. Brings us to item 5B, resolution authorizing the installation of a school bus stop ahead, signed near 16976 Northwest 40th Street and West Branch Oak Road.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. From time to time, we do get requests for school bus stop ahead signs. It's not automatic, so just because a school bus stops at your home doesn't mean we automatically put up a sign. We also do review these signs from time to time and remove them when there are no longer school buses that stop at that house. In this case, the installation of this sign does meet the manual of uniform traffic control devices. There is only 250 feet of stopping site distance on this road, so it is important to notify the traveling public that a school bus will stop on this road.
Move approval. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. Item 5C, a resolution in the matter authorizing the county board chair to sign the supplemental agreement 3 with JEO Consulting Group for additional professional and engineering duties related to a federal aid project at the 148th Street and Holdridge Street intersections.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This item and the item that follows are in regards to the HSIP project that is at 148th and Holdridge. What we determined as we proceeded on with the design is that some of the taper of the intersection improvement actually tapers into the floodplain, which means it kicks us into a different level of research and environmental work. And so I'd just like to remind the commissioners that this is a project that is federally funded, 80/20. So only 20% of this cost will be Lancaster County's taxpayers' responsibility.
Approval. I would second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. 5D, professional services supplemental agreement 3 with JEO Consulting Group to add floodplain permitting services to county contract C-21-0790.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. 5E, an agreement with Schemmer Associates Incorporated for professional engineering services required for the replacement of county bridge W-104 located on South 12th Street, approximately 900 feet north of Pella Road. The total cost to the county is not to exceed $96,740.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This contract is to do engineering services, to design a bridge. We've been trying to get these bridge designs on the shelf so they're ready to go should we get federal funding, so that, hey, if we have to close a bridge that we already know is bad, it doesn't take us a year, year and a half to get that bridge designed. And so this is one of the bridges that is on our bad bridge list, also known as our bridges that are rated poor and is in need of replacement. We've done maintenance to it over the years. It's just no longer a stable bridge, and it's time to replace it.
Move approval. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. 5F, contract with a Nebraska Machinery Company doing business as NMC Incorporated to provide the annual supply of caterpillar filters. The cost to the county is not to exceed $49,000.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So as it would be maybe four or five years ago, prior to COVID, we would order these parts kind of on demand, like when we needed them, we knew we could get them within 24 hours shipped to us. That's really not the case anymore. So we are focusing when we do our filter contracts and that we're ordering those now in bulk so that we have them on site because we can't afford to wait for them for two to four weeks and sometimes longer on these types of parts.
Caterpillar filter, sounds like something my daughter would use to catch bugs in the spring. Is that, is that what this is?
You know what that means, Commissioner Schulte? It means later today, you will get a picture of a caterpillar filter, and I'm sure you will be-
Oh, it's supposed to be caterpillar with a capital C.
There, there you go. And I'm sure you will be highly entertained, highly entertained.
I'll move approval of F.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. Item 5G, a sole-source contract with VigilNet to provide the SS213 SCRAM monitoring equipment. The cost to the county is not to exceed $30,000.
Commissioner Best, do you want to explain what this is?
Yeah, I sure do. Can I, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't recall this. Do we have someone here who's in the knowledge?
Oh, I thought this was your, I thought this, this was the new monitoring system that you tried out.
Is it?
Isn't this?
I don't think so.
Oh, maybe, maybe I'm-
You didn't have anything, any ankle monitoring bracelet?
You didn't have anything, any ankle monitoring bracelet put on at any point?
Boy, let's put that on the record.
I think we need a whole story here for the record.
There's no attorney client privilege here, let's say.
Sorry, that, yeah.
Oh, is that, okay, is that what this? I thought that's what this was.
That, yes, I, I believe that's what this is for ankle monitoring services, and that was obviously a gesture.
Okay, so, yes, as part of my ongoing education as the county commissioner and as the president of the justice council, I received the opportunity to wear a GPS monitoring ankle bracelet. So there are different kinds, and my understanding was very limited, having not been in, in this environment before. So the GPS model is new and high technology, and what they, I wore it for 24 hours, and when it was done, I got a great debriefing from the people in community corrections, and they literally could show everywhere I had driven, everywhere I had been. We put in, I'm going to call it an out of bounds zone. The pickleball courts were considered out of bounds, and so when that came on, they received a notice. It was in red, and they could, you know, get, get information to the appropriate sources. It was just a way for me to understand some of the protections society has when we're releasing people from jail, which is what we want. So, yes, I move approval of this.
I'll second that. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you for your service.
I will, I will move approval of SS20213 SCRA monitoring.
And, and we have a second by Commissioner Ammison. Please call the roll.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. Brings us to 5H, recommendation from the purchasing agent and Lancaster County Emergency Management to order and execute a purchase order for commodity to federal surplus. The total amount of the order is $22,500.
Do you want me to go first? Jim David Saver, Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. The commodity is a 2016 Ford F-150 Super Cab pickup. I need to add a vehicle to my fleet in anticipation of adding our training specialist position, and this was a, a vehicle that fit our needs at a fair market price.
Good morning. Pete Crowell, purchasing agent, Lancaster County, recommending this purchase. For this vehicle right now, there are some supply chain issues with vehicles. Mr. David Saver has looked at this vehicle. It fits his needs. We've looked at pricing associated with other vehicles similar without any of the options this has. This vehicle, current market value is 25.8, so requesting approval of this purchase.
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. 5I, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county sheriff to order a contract to Brown Brothers Construction Incorporated for the sheriff's office interior remodel project, the total amount of $357,478.
Good morning. John Vick, Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. As you know, this will be the final stage of our office remodel reconfiguration project, and our intent is to use forfeited assets to cover the costs of the construction in this contract.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yokum?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. 5J, documents associated with revalidating, excuse me, documents associated with the revalidation of Lancaster County Crisis Center's Medicare enrollment information, including, one, a Medicare enrollment application. This application also adds Krista Yokum as an authorized official on behalf of the county, and two, a letter to accompany the application attesting to the county's legal and financial responsibility for outstanding debt owed to CMS.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0. And 5K, setting the salaries for the following assistant public defenders. There are four, and I'll read all four together. Douglas Kearns in the amount of $99,070.40, step eight as an attorney one, effective October 5th, 2023. Emily Matthews in the amount of $80,132, step two as an attorney one, effective November 2nd, 2023. David Terrell in the amount of $102,635.52 as an attorney two, effective October 19th, 2023, and William Harris in the amount of $99,070.40, step eight as an attorney one, effective January 29th, 2024.
Okay, I am going to, I'm going to do something slightly complicated here. I'm going to make a motion, and then I'm going to explain my motion, and you're going to hate the sound of it at first, and I swear, you, you won't mind it as much when I explain it, or maybe you will, and that's, that's valid. So my motion is, and I had to, to get it right, I wrote it down ahead of time, I move to set the salary for Douglas Kearns in the amount of $102,635.52 as attorney two, effective October 5th, as well as setting the salary for Emily Matthews in the amount of $80,132 as attorney one, effective November 2nd, 2023, and I move to deny the setting of salaries for David Terrell and William Harris. My logic in this is, what I'd like to do here is, I want to encourage the public defender to come back at, at mid-year and put, and, and make the same request for the, the step increases then. We've been really pushing hard to try to keep directors to doing step increases at mid-year, and if the public defender comes back at mid-year, I will be actively supportive of this then. So it's just February, if that's, if that's, if that's okay. We're trying to not, every time we start doing step increases, we always end up setting off a kind of a arms race of step increases, so we're trying to keep them just to budget and just to mid-year, and if you come back at mid-year, I'll be supportive of those two. And then the, the slight adjustment upwards of Douglas Kearns is, I'm just, I'm a little uncomfortable. I appreciate where you were at when you were, I mean, frankly, you're trying to be a good steward of finances for the county, and I get that. I'm a little uncomfortable offering a job to someone that was posted at a higher level, and I just assumed hire him at, at, at an attorney two, and that doesn't change the fact that I will be supportive of the setting of the salaries for, for David and William at mid-year, even when you increase, I'm sorry, David to attorney two. I'll be supportive of that then. So, I don't know, I hope you don't hate me. But that's my motion, and that's my logic for it.
I would second that.
Yeah.
Do you have something to add?
Yeah, I, I just would agree with Commissioner Flowerday. We are very, trying to be very consistent in any position evaluations, any step increases. Those happen during the budget process or at mid-year, and so we can all look at the ramifications on the budget for the department, so I, I'm going to support that.
So, come back in a couple of months, and we'll do it.
Right. Did you have anything you wanted to address?
I just thank you for taking these matters into consideration. I think Emily will be a great asset to the office. I'll come and introduce her when she starts, hopefully November 2nd, and I appreciate you letting Doug Kearns and Katie Hootson introduce themselves. Senator, or Commissioner Ammison, you asked a question about Will Harris. He was in the National Guard.
Okay.
Under you, I think. I don't think he formally met you, but.
He was in the JAG office then.
Yeah, yeah, he was. Yeah.
Okay, very good.
So, thank you. I will, I will let Mr. Terrell and Mr. Harris know that we will take this up in a couple of months.
And, you, like, feel free to, and in fact, I encourage you to say, like, I, I will be supportive of this. I think other commissioners will be too. I don't want to speak for them, but I think that the support will be there to do this just at mid-year, not right now.
I, I wonder what the other employees in the office are going to think about Doug being moved up when he agreed to be hired at, he'll move up in six months to attorney two. So I understand you've approved it. I, I will explain it that way then, so.
We have not voted yet.
Okay.
We will approve it momentarily, I assume.
I get that. I'm just, I'm uncomfortable advertising a job and then trying to negotiate backwards from there. It just, it feels, I don't know. We, we spend so much time talking about employer of choice and trying to make Lancaster County, you know, a desirable place, and it just, something about that that just feels, I, I know, I know Doug Kearns has, he, he, he's talented. He was very, yeah, he, he, he was very willing to work with us, and I appreciate it. He was very nice when he came forward. I just, it, I'd feel more comfortable doing this and get an extra attorney two out of it, so.
I know that my request for an attorney two was out of the ordinary, and I appreciate the commissioners granting that. I had heard that that hadn't been done before, and I didn't know that because I'm new to this, you know. The salary amount is the same. He, Doug did not start at a lower salary than what was advertised. He actually started at a little bit above the level for, for attorney one, step eight, but that is higher than what we advertised for an attorney two, because it was $98,000 something when we advertised. Then the 4.5% cost of living increased it to 99 something, or 102, and attorney one, step eight, is $99,000 something, the $99,070. And so the title of attorney two really didn't mean anything to Doug, and I felt that this was a fair compromise to be fair to the other attorney twos in the office who got there by way of promotions, and that was my thinking, so.
So the $99,070.40 fits within the range for attorney two? Is that what you're saying?
No, it is attorney one, step eight. In six months, he would move up to attorney two, would be the plan, but the dollar amounts are actually more than what we advertised to, advertised for at the time in, I don't know, July, August, thereabouts, and the cost of living increase went up in, in the middle of August, I think.
Right, right, I see now.
So I just present that information to you.
I get it. I, I, I would leave, leave, leave my motion the same. I'd, I'd still just, I'd rather just hire someone at, and if we need to, if we need to make other adjustments at mid-year, I'll, I'll be supportive of that then, so.
I see no further discussion. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to item six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items related to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on, today, on items that are not on our agenda? Please come forward. State your name, sign in, and you will have five minutes.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Penny Stevens. I'm here to continue what I started speaking about back on September 5th and September 12th, and that is the vul, vulnerability of our voting systems in regards to the connection of the DMV to the ESNS, and I presented back then a contract that was by our Secretary of State's office, giving permission to ESNS to gain access to the DMV. I also showed that there is software available to pull driver's license information from any DMV in every state and how it's connected online, and that it is vulnerable for the information to be sold or hacked. Allowing individuals to get driver's license, there's no, what do I want to say, protection to, to make sure that these people that are getting driver's license are actually eligible to vote. The software that I showed before is, you're allowed to pull signatures, birthdates, all that information. The motor voter law was put in, signed into law in 97 by President Clinton. So one of the things there's, when you go to register, and this isn't Nebraska, but I did show Nebraska's last time, there's an area where you check whether you are a citizen of the United States, whether you can vote or not. The software allows you not to mark whether yes or no, which then gives them, nobody's checking this, by the way. And so if they don't check it, then they don't commit a felony. I just wanted to point that out. There's been a huge push recently to get people to register to vote. I mean, it's just, it's been everywhere, absolutely everywhere. My question then is, why do we need to increase voter turnout? If you want to vote, wouldn't you make yourself aware of the issues that you're voting on? What's the big push? Is there like a, an award whoever gets the most people up to vote? I, I, I think we're going to see a lot of issues in the coming elections because of the push to, for everybody to register to vote, and with everybody coming over the border, it's, it's not going to be good. I just wanted to point out in 2018, Arizona's DMV, they were not updating their voter rolls. Huge issues there back in, then, if you search for voter database breaches, you can find multiple millions and millions of people where there's breaches in the voter databases. Back in 2019, hackers hit the California DMV. In Texas, in 2020, millions of people affected by another driver's license breach. This was yet another one. Two years, two, three years later, the California DMV was breached. There was a massive attack earlier this year in the Oregon DMV systems. Louisiana was hit early this year by the same software hack. It's called MoveIt. Pennsylvania DMV was hit by hackers. There's multiple findings in Pennsylvania where non-citizens registered to vote. 27% of non-citizens cast at least one ballot before they were removed. There's, there's just multiple information out there and evidence that this is actually happening. Now, currently, this MoveIt software that was hacked, and I'm going to have to finish up, but I want to just know that this is like one of the biggest hacks in the history of the United States, and it's from this MoveIt breach, and it's been going on for several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during public comment today? Seeing none, we can proceed.
Commissioners, brings us to announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October 19th, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its regular meeting on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L-N-K TV. L-N-K TV is available on ALO Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the broadcast schedule, visit Lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L-N-K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. The last time I have is adjournment.
Move, we adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We will now begin the Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, September seventeenth.
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed at the county's website at Lancaster dot NE dot gov. Commissioners, item one is minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, October third, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Abstain.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with an abstention. Item two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rules.
Move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rules.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the additions and deductions to tax assessment rules. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item three is the certification of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tax levies.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item four is our public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications for Cedars Youth Services and the Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders Counties.
We will now open the public hearing on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to these? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Item five was action on the following, the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Public comment. Those wishing to speak on items related to county Board of Equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding county Board of Equalization business? Not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll...
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Yokum?
Yes.